The Lee County Board of Commissioners will come to order at this time. Mr. Pascal, the first, Mr. Hoyle, to lead us in the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. If you'll stand and join us, please.
Almighty God, our heavenly Father, we give you praise and thanks for all your mercies. We thank you for the beauty of this day and bless you for the gift of life, for your protection around us, and for your guiding hand upon us, and for friendship and duty, for good hopes and precious memories, for the joys that cheer us, and the trials that teach us to trust in you. We ask that you look with favor and bless the members of the Board of Commissioners, giving them wisdom and strength to know and do your holy will. We ask our Father a special blessing for the infant child known as Gavin, who is the grandson of our associate Dale Talbert. He currently is in the NU NC Hospital in Chapel Hill, suffering from the effects of a common cold upon his infant lungs. We ask our Father that you give those who are tending to him the power of healing and that he may be restored to health and returned to his family. Be asked this, trusting in your compassion, love, and grace, the hope of all mankind. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I'd like to welcome you all here today. We have a full house and a very interesting program and agenda. And the first part is one that's joyful, and not that the others are not, but this one is particularly a pleasant task. And it has to do with the award of the Employee of the Year for the year 2009. And I'd like to ask Lisa Price, please, to come forward and guide us through this.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. Today, we will be announcing Lee County's 2009 Employee of the Year. This year, the Employee of the Year will receive a Star Trophy and a Frame Certificate from the Board of Commissioners. Also, Progress Energy and 103 Restaurant located at 103 Wicker Street have each donated $150 for the Employee of the Year prize selection. We appreciate these two businesses being part of this program and greatly appreciate their donation. The Employee of the Year will select their $300 prize from a business of their choice in Lee County. The Lee County Employee of the Month program was approved by the Board of Commissioners in October of 2005. And 2009 marks the fourth and final year of this program. Over the last four years, Papa John's, Sanford Coca-Cola Bottling Company, and the Movie Gallery have sponsored the program with pizza, soft drinks, and a movie, and we thank them. We also would like to thank Sprint, Time Warner, Progress Energy, and 103 Restaurant for sponsoring the Employee of the Year prize selection. Most of all, we thank the Board for allowing dedicated employees to be recognized. At this time, I would like to introduce the Workplace Enhancement Committee, and I'll ask that they stand. Mark Clark, Leveon McLean, Brenda Potts, Mary Yow. These employees have spent a lot of time and energy on this program, and I thank them, and they deserve a round of applause. Now, I would like to introduce to you the 2009 Employees of the Month. As I call their name, I ask that each employee come forward, and we're going to have to kind of squeeze in a little bit. For January, Ms. Nancy Campbell. For February, Ms. Sandra Sharling. For March, Ms. Terri Johnson. For April, Ms. Rhonda Crumpton. For May, Ms. Pam Rademauer. And for June, Ms. Nedra Norton. Trying to squeeze her in. For August, excuse me, for July, Debbie Scott. For August, Denise Fitzpatrick. For September, Delise Williams. For October, Jackie Moran. For November, Adrianne Corrin. And for December, Mr. TC Yaw. I congratulate these employees. Every day, they work hard for Lee County and the citizens of our community, and they deserve a round of applause. And now, for the 2009 Employee of the Year. The 2009 Employee of the Year is a positive and upbeat employee. They are consistently courteous and considerate, always motivated to assist others without being prompted. They can always be counted on to work with others tactfully and to treat others with respect and understanding. This employee demonstrates excellent leadership qualities and is highly competent in their job. This employee communicates and works well with the Sheriff's Department, District Judges, District Attorney's Office, Clerk of Court, and other staff to make sure that they know the circumstances of the pretrial release program for which they are responsible. They know the importance of having the lines of communication open, and they are always available to provide more information when needed. Since their involvement in assisting the District Attorney, the program has allowed the expediting of cases to move more efficiently through the court system. Their hard work is evident. The first quarter of this year, $261,171.65 was cost-avoided due to the expediting and pretrial release of cases. It is also important to note that their skills in managing their client population has led to the success of this program, as they expect their clients to follow the guidelines they set forth. This employee drives for high performance, benefits from all, and benefits all parties. This employee is a pet lover, enjoys fishing and kayaking, and also enjoys spending time with their family. She has worked for Lee County for approximately 10 years. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, ladies and gentlemen, it gives me great honor to introduce to some and present to others Ms. Andrea Curran, Lee County Employee of the Year for 2009.
And I'm here to say that your name is on here, thankfully. I'd like to read this to you, and I'd like to congratulate you, and all members of the Commission will. Let me just read this to you. Employee of the Year 2009, Lee County Government Awards, Andrea Curran, for going above and beyond regular duties to be an outstanding employee. And let me hand you this, and also this Star Award, which should have... Yeah, it's your name, right there. You can see through it. This is wonderful, and we are so proud of you, and we thank you for your service. And to all of the finalists, again, our congratulations to you. We are very proud of you and very pleased to have you a part of this family.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now look at the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or additions to be made?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I need to add two items. The first is a purchase of a lift-equipped van for Colts. The item abstract should be in front of you. And then the second item is a request from the Lee County EDC to go an executive session to discuss economic development issues with them.
All right. We will itemize the leased senior services Colts as Item I under, actually, oh, under the consent agenda, under the consent agenda. And then the closed session will be Roman numeral eight as closed session, economic development. Are there any other changes to be made to the agenda? If not, do I hear a motion that will be approved? Been moved that we approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Thank you very much. Now, for the consent agenda. We, you've had an opportunity to look that over, and you know that it has been amended with the one item. And do I hear a motion that the consent agenda be approved?
So moved.
It's been moved, that the consent agenda be approved. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Sir?
We got a little discussion?
You do indeed.
All right. I like to pull Item G.
Okay. Now, let's pull that, and we'll make that Item G under New Business, if that's sad factory.
And I've got just a couple of questions on Item E. And I can ask him. I don't have any opposition to it. I just got a couple of questions.
Okay.
Ask him now?
Sure. Go ahead.
Under E, the employee benefit... I think it indicates that, what is it, retirement? This is the one that the county manager has to approve. That's the family medical, I'm sorry.
Oh, under E, Item 2, page 21 to 30, is that it?
Yeah, that's the section. There's one in there about retirement, and I'm trying to get to the right page.
That's actually, that's under health insurance. Page 318, page 18.
This is the one that... It's Item G. It looks like it's on the 3.5.
That's correct.
Yeah. And it talks about premiums for retired health insurance coverage. If payment arrangements are not agreed upon by the end of the grace period for that month, all rights and retired coverage will be lost and benefits will return. The arrangement must be approved by the county manager. Is that, is that the only opportunity this person will have to debate this issue?
No, sir. If there is a failure for them to pay, then we would work with them and try to come up with some terms of payment, and then we would just get it approved by the county manager to say that we did have those terms agreed upon. That's pretty much what that means. We did have some problems collecting retired health insurance this year. They started having to pay that $34.63 premium. We had some problems there with non-sufficient funds in the bank accounts when we do the drafts. And so this way, it gives them an option for us just canceling their insurance without giving them an option to pay the premiums or work with them to get the payments.
I guess all I'm trying to figure out is what happens if there is still a disagreement, that the manager chooses not to sign that particular one, and what relief do they get?
Pretty much, we would sit down and talk with them, but it would be their decision to pay or not, because they need to pay.
I mean, the ability to pay is what I'm talking about.
We would look at and try to work with them. We wouldn't cut someone's insurance off without working with them.
You may not always be, that's all. I just want to make sure that's clear. I don't know that that ought to be an item that one person gets to make the final decision, is all I'm pointing out here. Because that's a very important piece.
Yes, it is.
Cut the person's work.
You want me to add Finance Director and HR Director in there?
Actually, the Board of Commissioners, if it gets to that point.
Okay.
Is all I'm saying.
I can do that.
I think the Board ought to be fully aware in the event that it gets to that level. And that's all.
I'll add that in.
All right. Thank you. The other one was, I like the military piece on the family medical league. And the only point I was going to ask there, I wondered if that would apply to other businesses as well?
Yes, sir. It is allowed. It is allowed.
All right. And the last one, I know that HIPAA policy is new.
Yes, sir.
And for the changes, you have red.
It's a whole new policy. I don't have any, I didn't want to waste the ink, so I just put the top part in red because the whole policy's new. I just developed it. It's not even in our policy.
Okay, well, you got red, so you got North Carolina State code, so let's get Carolina blue.
I'll see if we can do that.
But it does make it a little simpler. That red really helps.
That's why I do them in red.
You would be, another color would really help. No automatic.
This is a completely new policy. We did not have one in place, and if we were self-funding, we would have to have a much more detailed policy, but this just gives the guidelines and how we protect the information and what we do with people's protected health information.
Oh, I'm fine with the policy. I just, I like the idea that you change the color for the changes and the new one.
New would be blue?
Carolina blue, not Duke blue, Carolina blue.
We'll see what we can come up with.
Dewayne uses all the Carolina blue.
Okay, does that, that answers your questions, Mr. Reeves? And then we put the other item to G under New Business. And with that, I believe there's a motion?
Yes, a motion.
Oh, well, we need to approve this first, and then we'll come to that. All in favor of the consent agenda as amended, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? The consent agenda is approved as amended. Now, before we go beyond this point, I want to double back and read several citations that honor retiring employees. And I believe that, and these were covered in the consent agenda, but we want to personalize this. Is Deborah Scott, if you'd come forward? How are you?
Allow me to read this on behalf of the Board. Whereas Deborah Scott began employment with the Lee County Health Department on November the 4th, 1989, as a public health nurse 1. And whereas Deborah Scott was promoted throughout the years from public health nurse 1 to public health nurse 3. And whereas Deborah Scott served as interim public health nurse supervisor for several months. And whereas Deborah Scott has demonstrated a deep commitment to her job and to the citizens of Lee County. And whereas Deborah Scott retired February 1st, 2010, with 20 years and 2 months of total service. And whereas it is the desire of the Lee County Board of Commissioners to recognize the achievements of Deborah Scott and to express its appreciation to her for her dedicated service and contribution to Lee County. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners for Lee County, that it congratulates Deborah Scott for a career of public service, which has been characterized by a genuine interest in and concern for Lee County, and it wishes Deborah Scott continued success in all of her future endeavors. This is adopted and presented the first day of March of 2010, and we are presenting it on today to you. Go back and congratulations. Thank you very much.
The other retiree, and I'll read this citation as well, but she is not here today. But nevertheless, our gratitude goes out to her and our regret that she's not here. So please indulge me for just one more minute or two. This is Glenda Douglas, and she is retiring. And the resolution goes on to say, whereas Glenda Douglas began employment with the Lee County Department of Social Services as a temporary clerk typist 2 from November 6, 1992 through January 13, 1995. And whereas Glenda Douglas became a full-time employee of the Department of Social Services on June 21, 1995 as a processing assistant 3. And whereas Glenda Douglas was promoted to accounting tech 1 on April 28, 1997. And whereas Glenda Douglas was promoted to income maintenance caseworker status on January 16, 2004, where she remained until her retirement. And whereas Glenda Douglas has demonstrated a deep commitment to her job and to the citizens of Lee County. And whereas Glenda Douglas retired March 1st, 2010, with 14 years and 8 months of total service. And whereas it is the desire of the Lee County Board of Commissioners to recognize the achievements of Glenda Douglas and to express its appreciation to her for her dedicated service and contribution to Lee County. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners for Lee County, that it congratulates Glenda Douglas for a career of public service, which has been characterized by a genuine interest in and concern for Lee County, and it wishes Glenda Douglas continued success in all of her future endeavors. And I think we should applaud this recognition. Now, give this to Mrs. Lee. At this time, we come to the public comment section, recalling that these public comments are to our citizens to speak to us and to take not more than three minutes, please. And we have one speaker who wishes to speak to us this afternoon, Mr. Clark. If you'll come forward and identify yourself and speak to us.
I'm Keith Clark, 212 Acorn Drive, Sanford, North Carolina, 27330. I want to commend your Employee of the Year. I want to say it's someone who is familiar with her program. There's a lot of cost avoidance there. We've got a jail that's filling up. And a very good strategy would be, if we could clone her two or three times, we could probably put off what would be a $40 or $50 million capital investment for a number of years. And I just throw that out. This is, I took advantage of rules determine how the game is played, and I try to use them to my advantage. I wanted to say that, secondly, that any future presentations will be in Carolina blue. Number 3, I want to say this is not part of a 12-step program for ethics. If there was one, I would need to be in it. I have, however, been concerned with the decision that this board made some time ago. And that was a decision to rely on the work of the Institute of Government and the Association of County Commissioners for its Board of Ethics. I am familiar with the Board, the Association. I worked with them when I was Assistant Secretary of Health and Human Services. Patrice and Rebecca were both in my office a lot, and I understand the value that they bring. But as I know they said, thanks to a member, they work for the Commissioners of North Carolina, not for the people of North Carolina. And I have seen that in their work in such things as joining with the League of Municipalities in opposing the anti-ANX resolution. And I believe if they're going to work, with all due respect, for the Commissioners rather than people, that the Commissioners ought to pay their dues. I also realize you contract with them many times for services, and you can have any objection to that. But my ears went up. Not, again, I respect the organization. In your material, which I will not go over, is sort of a history of documents that have developed over time relating to ethics, including one adopted by a Board of Commissioners here in this county. And what you will observe is they get longer and they get more complicated. They move from being positive. Am I timed up? So I'll now step over and wait for the next item on the agenda.
Just hold your place. Mr. Clark, you are indeed the next item under New Business, your request to appear before the Board of Commissioners. And you may proceed.
So this is the context in which I am making this. It's always good to admit one's weaknesses. It's better to work to make them strengths. I can tell you that ethics is something that I do think about. I do consciously think about them. I always find myself wanting. And so I'm not here to lecture as an ethics expert, but as a fancy myself as an organizational development expert. And Vince Lombardi, I want to talk to you about your leadership challenge. Vince Lombardi said that individual commitment to a group effort is what makes a team work, a company work, a society work, civilization work, and I'd say a community work. The challenge for any community's leaders is to have strategies to inform, inspire, and encourage individuals to act ethically, and also to hold them accountable when they do not. I see in the ethics requirement for you, an ethics opportunity. An opportunity to build community confidence in government. An opportunity to encourage creativity and innovation. An opportunity to foster community... opportunity to foster community participation. I think it's a shame that I'm the only one here for 30 minutes. And it's an opportunity to enhance decision-making within the board itself. So I see it as an opportunity. What are your challenges if you take on that opportunity? Number one is defining values. Fundamentally, I believe values, whether we know what our values are consciously or we don't, is what governs basically our behavior. And I think it's important. I see what happens when people's values cause them to choose an ideology, and they let that values overrun, or the ideology override their values. The next thing is the challenge of integrating ethics into what you do, and finally, what I call protecting ethics from rules. First, I'd like to say that a line I looked at was, ethics is what's involved when there's a choice between two good choices. Does not deal with the choice between right and wrong. Conscious accountability to deal with that. Ten minutes is up? Wow. May I just finish quickly through these, Mr. Chairman? Simple ethics. There are some ethic dilemmas. I will get you copies of this that are in your material that people naturally run into. And there's a list of simple ethics, and I encourage you to consider developing a process that would involve the community to develop with Commissioners to develop ethics for this board. Thank you very much.
Hold just a second. Are there any questions? Would anyone wish to comment or question Mr. Clark about any of this? Thank you very much. The next item has to do with the Agricultural Advisory Board update, and for this I'll call on Mrs. Conlon to speak to us and to introduce us perhaps to some of her distinguished guests.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you to speak about the Voluntary Agricultural District. Just wanted to, for the new members, go back a little bit in history and remind you that in September of 2008, the Voluntary Agricultural District ordinance was adopted. Tommy Brooks and myself worked with Jerry Lamond, then County Commissioner, to develop the ordinance along with other county agencies and county members in our county to put this ordinance together. Then in 2009, in February, Broadway Town Council accepted the ordinance also, and then coming up into June of 2009, you appointed the Agricultural District Board and Advisory Today, we have some of the Advisory Board members here with you, with us, as well as Don Nicholson is here to speak and give you an update as to what's been happening over this past year. I'd like for our Advisory Board members to stand and be recognized. We have several of them with you, with us. Tom, Or, Don Nicholson, Jane Bagger, all are with us today as Don comes and gives you an update on everything we've been doing. Don Nicholson is the chairman of the Agricultural Advisory Board, and so we appreciate you giving him that opportunity to speak to you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Thank you all. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the board for its support of agriculture in this county and recognizing that it is still an important part of the economy of this county and our history and all that. The funds supporting the work that we have done have come from the Agricultural Development Farmland Preservation Trust fund, which means most important for y'all, that it's a budget-neutral project here in the county, which you guys always like that kind of thing, I'm sure. And another thing, I think you referred to us as distinguished, obviously you don't know me too well. I'm just joking. We did, we started meeting in June, came together in June, and officially started in July, and we have met monthly since July, coming together and first of all hammering out the bylaws, the way that the board is going to be run, how it's structured, that kind of thing, how we're going to be doing what we do. Then we have pounded out a sign. We were hoping that we would have the sign. You guys have supposedly have the brochures in front of you. Hopefully you have the sign. The sign is in there, so we were hoping to have a large sign here to show you, but you know, things don't work out the way you want to all the time. But it's taken us several months and a lot of meetings, and we have done well. It's a very good group. They're passionate about agriculture. Even the folks that did not grow up on farms here in Lee County are still passionate about agriculture and want to protect it. The Voluntary Ag District, just to share a few things about it, is to, number one, is to help preserve agriculture and help preserve farmland. This is the first step, hopefully, of one of these days having some farmland preservation done in Lee County so that we can keep the farmlands farming. Number two is to protect the farmers through, we've got lots of new neighbors, you know. When I was growing up in Lemon Springs, I could go to the end of Nicholson Road and the intersection of Edward Road, and I might see five cars all day long. And now it seems like it's five cars a minute. So it's, times have changed, and new neighbors that have not grown up on farms do not understand how, you know, it's not, farming is not a Norman Rockwell Saturday Evening Post magazine cover. Farms stink, irrigation pumps are loud, we go all hours of the night and day, and so we need to afford our farmers some protection of what they give Lee County, and this Voluntary Ag District helps do that. Does anybody have any questions concerning the VAD or the Agriculture Advisory Board?
Any questions, anyone?
I just want to say keep up the good work.
Well, we appreciate your support more than you know.
Thank you. Yeah, just again, I think this speaks on behalf of the entire board, but I think it's just a great thing you folks are about because our agriculture, our farms are fleeting if we don't stand and protect them, and they are so important to what we're all about.
That's true.
So, you know, thank you, and we wish you well, and hope that you'll continue to communicate with us and let us know. And I just wanted to add one other thing, our Jerry Lamond, who was a Commissioner, I heard you mention his name, and he was a part of the organization of this, and I think it's nice to recognize him again and pay tribute to his efforts.
Jerry has served as the vice chair and has, you know, sometimes I'm late to a meeting, and Jerry's always been Johnny on the spot about getting things started and running on with it. One other thing that I did that I was remiss about saying, we are ready to start signing up, folks. Hopefully, we're going to start around April 1st sometime in that, so we're forging ahead. Again, thank you for your support, and I know that all the farmers in Lee County, thank you for it.
I have one quick question. Did you by chance, or have your organization shared this with the Board of Realtors?
Yes, the Realtors are aware of the VAD, and...
No, I mean this document, so that, just so they'll have the same thing that we have.
That I do not know. I cannot answer that question, but we can.
I'd like to see how to process with the Realtors and planning and permits so that everybody knows it's out there, and if a developer comes in and, you know, wants to move close to one, you know, buy land around one of these, that they're, you know, it's, it is what it is, don't complain after the fact.
Yeah, I'm probably too late to complain about a chicken house.
I agree. Not everybody understands what it means to live out in the country.
That's correct.
It's going to be really important for, I mean, when we get squeezed from both Bev and Holly.
When it's, I understand that when it goes to the county and somebody does a title search, that it will pop up that it is in a Voluntary Agricultural District. So there's not going to be, hopefully not going to be any surprises if there's a piece of property that's within a VAD.
Part of the VAD is the signing of a conservation agreement, and that agreement is a legal document that is filed with the Register of Deeds. So when someone, as Don said, goes before, goes to do a title search, it's going to pop up that this document or this property is in a VAD. Also, we've worked with GIS and with the tax office. On the tax office, their card, it's going to list it that it's in a Voluntary Ag District, as well as GIS is going to be drawing us some maps to show where these farms are in the one-mile radius or half a mile radius area so that we have maps that will be posted at the Register of Deeds. But we do, we have talked, Jimmy, about going to the Board of Realtors to also explain this, and I think that will, that would be good to...
You know, if it were to show up on the, you know, at the clerk report where you did show that one-mile radius, that might, you know, I'd hate for it not to show up, and then, you know, if somebody goes and buys a property beside a VAD and then starts complaining about, you know, chicken houses or something.
You've got a signage too. The signs that you have here on the farms, they'll have these smaller signs, and then we'll also have big signs in each of the seven townships that say you're entering a Voluntary Ag District too. So I think, and we'll be doing some more PR work too and talking to people and...
We have spoken to the commodity groups, so to speak, that are in the county, county area farmers. The forestry association, we're scheduled to go on April 13th, I believe, to the livestock association meeting and talk to them about this. We've also spoke at a Farm Bureau board meeting last, was it last week, Susan? And I have been asked a couple times if we were going to be available to do civic groups, and I'd be more than happy to talk to civic groups about this and tell them about what VAD is all about, so.
We'd like to encourage that. Get the word out and speak to as many as you can.
And we're also slated to be a sounding board for you guys, and we're, you know, if you have an issue that is about agriculture, please send it our way. We will, we'll help you address it if we can.
When did you say you were going to actually start to sign up?
We're going to try, April 1st.
April 1st.
Hopefully, everything will be ready, and we'll have all the hoops jump through and all that, so we'll get on with it. Thank you all.
Thank you. Fellow Commissioners, I believe we would wish to accept this report, and I wonder if there's a motion to do so.
Send move.
Send move that this report be accepted and approved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose. It's approved unanimously, and thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. The next item on the agenda has to do with the approval of changes to the Lee County Health Insurance Plan, and Mrs. McGee, he is going to speak with us about that, and I believe she has someone that's going to, yes?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon.
Today, we'd like to present to you some proposed changes to the insurance plan. Mr. Mark Broward is here with Mark Three, Brokerage. He is our broker that works with us and helps us go out and get the best prices we can get, and he's going to go through the presentation with you. You have a copy of the presentation at your stations, and if you have questions, please ask, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Broward.
Good afternoon. I believe this is my annual visit to you all to talk about the lovely subject of health insurance. And I sent the, originally I sent the presentation to Joyce, and she corrected something. This was in red, so for those of you who prefer a bluer color, she's already made the appropriate changes to the presentation, depending on what your persuasion is. So today I want to talk about just sort of plan and performance. The staff and I have been meeting for several months now, talking about what was coming up, what the options were available, the budgetary situation that exists here, not only here in Lee County but across the state. We work with about 30 counties on benefits and health insurance, and everyone, for the most part, is struggling with what's going on this year. So this is the, oh, the second page you see is the 0809 Plan Experience, and the plan was trending up about 12% last year, and as you remember, we made plan design changes at the beginning of this plan year, which began in August. If you go to the next page, you'll remember that we made changes to, basically split up one plan into three. We put in, of course, we changed the existing plan, we put in a retiree plan, and then we also added health savings accounts as well. And when you look on this particular slide, there's only a couple of months of experience because of the lack of experience that's available from Blue Cross, but you can automatically see, if you look on the right-hand side of the slides, that the PPO, Plan Performance per member per month is $307. The HSA is about $100 less than that, and the plan overall is actually trending better than the previous year. So the initial impact of the plan design changes that we made were positive.
Mark, can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
The column that says premium slash member, is that what the county is paying per member?
That's actually an aggregate number. It takes the premium paid divided by the total number of members. In some subsequent slides, we actually have the contribution by the county, and this is just basically an aggregate number, taking everybody's contribution to the plan.
Because when I was looking at these at home, I saw that claim slash per member. My question was, are we spending that much per month, per person?
No. No, no. Not per employee, I mean per employee. Basically, you're taking the county's contribution, the employee's contribution, and you lump all that together and divide it by the total number of members in each plan. So the next slide is basically, we handle, the bulk of our business is self-funded clients, so we do the claims projections, we do the budgeting, we set the rate, helps up the rates for our clients, but we do the underwriting, whether it's a fully insured or a self-funded plan. And initially, what we were giving the county is sort of giving the staff an expectation of what the renewal would look like. You'll notice on this at the bottom, two months, August and September, you'll see that there was actually a decrease in the premium paid by the county in aggregate. That was a result of the changes that we made, and the staff did a great job of actually saving the county money over the previous year. So when you take the claims and you look at the current premium, given how the plan has run, you would be expecting something on the lines of a 28% increase in the current benefit design. We were able to negotiate a significantly improved renewal over this, and it sort of gives you an idea of what we were actually facing going into this renewal season. So on the next slide is the current plan and design, and actually, if you look at the contributions, it is actually more than what was on that per member per month slide. But basically where we're at today is on the current PPO, it's 25 for a primary care visit, 50 for specialist visits. The preventive services vary depending on whether it's a primary care or specialist visit. The deductible is $1,000 per single, 2,000 for total family. The out-of-pocket maximum on top of the deductible is 3,000 for an individual, 6,000 for a family. If you go into an inpatient or outpatient setting, it's the deductible, then the participant pays the 20% until they reach that coinsurance maximum. If you go to urgent care, it's 50, ER is 150, and the pharmacy benefits are 10 for generic, 35 for the second tier, 50 for the third tier, and then that last tier is for biologics and injectables, the most expensive medication. The member's responsibility is a minimum of 50 and a maximum of 100, and then you see the current rates. We also added the MAPD program, which is for the retired, the post-65 retiree population, and then we added the HSA plan. In its simplest form, it is a high deductible plan, which is $1,500. The county provides that participant, the employee, with $750 in their health savings account. Once the deductible is satisfied, then the participant pays another 20% until they reach the coinsurance maximum for single of 2,000, or family is 2,000. You'll see that the deductible for single is 1,500, the family deductible is 3,000, and then the premiums below. So the renewal that we actually received on the next slide was about, it was a 12.65% increase year-over-year, as I indicated earlier, significantly below what a traditional renewal calculation would dictate. So the only difference between this slide and the previous slide, for the most part, is the premium paid, and it actually impacts both the PPO plan and the HSA plan. So across the board, essentially, it was a 12.65% increase. So across the board, essentially, it was a twelve point six five percent increase. The next slide, we talked about a variety of different solutions to meet budget, as we all understand, it's a difficult budget season, and so what we were trying to do was to find a fair solution for all involved and provide benefits that are still attractive and competitive and protect the employees. So the first option is essentially, it actually changes the copays for the preventive services and the primary care, and you'll see for, for primary care, it's a twenty-dollar copay instead of twenty-five. But one of the significant changes is that specialist services change from a fifty-dollar copay to applying to deductible and a co-insurance of thirty percent. Preventive services are twenty dollars. The deductible remains the same, but what is an improvement in the plan is the co-insurance maximum changing from three thousand for a single down to two thousand, so you have less exposure, and the family goes from six thousand down to four thousand. One of the nuances for the hospital services is that if you go to an inpatient hospitalization setting, you do pay two hundred and fifty-dollar copay, then the deductible applies, but instead of paying twenty percent of the cost today, you would pay ten percent of the cost. Outpatient services, including urgent care, would apply to deductible, but thirty percent paid by the member up until the co-insurance limit. If you're in an emergency room, the difference between those two, the two fifty deductible and ten percent, is if you're admitted. If you're not admitted, it's the deductible and thirty percent. The cost for this brings us basically down to back where we were on the renewal. The M A P D program does not change at all, and the H S A is brought back to, the H S A does not change at all, and nor do the premiums for this particular solution, and when you took, take it all together, you're actually talking about a decrease in costs of about one point eight percent. If you go to the next slide, and let me, let me back up one second. This blue options, one, two, three, this new P P O option, what you're, what you're going to continue to see within the healthcare field is more and more plans moving to deductible and co-insurance. Essentially, what this is, is primary care is a twenty-dollar copay. I'm sorry, the pharmacy benefits also changed, a step back. They did actually go up on pharmacy, the pharmacy benefits did change from ten thirty-five, fifty to ten forty-five, sixty, so I apologize for that omission. But essentially, for primary care, it's, it's the twenty-dollar copay. For pharmacy, it's a copay, but essentially, everything in the middle applies to a, to a form of deductible and co-insurance. So when I first presented this to the staff, it looked good, but there were some current concerns about the specialist deductible and co-insurance, and all of the deductible and co-insurance that starts to apply to the coverage, and so we looked at a copay solution, something that's, you know, that people are used to, and that you, you know, all the way through the process, it's, it's copays that are applied. Well, to get the rate relief, to get us down to essentially the same place as the previous option, you would see the copays for, for primary care go to thirty-five, specialists go to seventy, the deductible go from a thousand to seventeen fifty, and we're back at the previous co-insurance limits of three thousand and six thousand. E R stays the same, the pharmacy benefits of this option are the same as the previous one. The H S A option remains unchanged, and the M A P D program remains unchanged, and we're at about a one and a half percent reduction. So we talked about what the county can afford to do versus, you know, the desire, certainly we, I understand and empathize with the desire to keep everything the same as much as possible. When I talk to staff, there really isn't any money to absorb a twelve percent increase. So if we kept the contributions by the county the same, and the employees picked up the difference, if you look at the bottom half of this slide, right now, employees for P P O pay thirty-four sixty-three per month for employee only, two forty-nine-six and five ninety-four twenty-six for family, and if we go and keep the current plan, you see a huge increase in the employee contribution, which, from my perspective, is not a good solution. It would also, you know, and this, I think, is a huge negative, it would also impact the H S A plan as well, where employees are paying zero for employee only, one eighteen for employee and children, and four fifty-nine, question, four ninety-five for family. They would also see an increase, and again, to us, we feel that that is a real negative and not a great solution. These are the rates for the first option that I gave you that included the blue options one, two, three, P P O option, and keeping the H S A the same. As you can see, there is no change in contribution by the employees. There is a slight reduction in the contribution by the county, and we think that it's a good budgetary solution and still provides good protection, depending on which side of the employees choose to go, whether it's the H S A or the blue options one, two, three. And this would be the same for, for the option two that we gave you that had the seventeen hundred and fifty-dollar deductible and the thirty-five seventy copay. So either option, it is a, it's no increase in employee contribution. Of course, you are making benefit design changes. Now, so the first reaction that any of us have when someone makes a change, especially on benefits, is an emotional one. We are, we're concerned, we're upset, you know, what are we actually going to pay? You know, naturally, employees feel that way, and each one of us, whoever we're covered, would feel exactly the same way. When you sort of step back and you go through some possible claim examples, which I'm going to give you, then it's not as catastrophic as you might think that it is. It really isn't as big of an issue, and of course, it all varies based on an individual situation. This was a slide that we actually provided employees last year during the open enrollment, when employees were trying to make a decision between the H S A and the current P P O plan. What is surprising, if you look at the top right-hand corner, is that at this point, about twenty-seven percent of the population only had a hundred and forty-six dollars of claims through the plan in the previous twelve months, and about another fourteen percent on top of that had, on average, five hundred and fifty-six dollars of claims. So you're talking about over forty percent of the population having essentially mid-five hundred dollars and down of claims. So when you think about plan design change, it is, wow, I'm going to really get killed, and you always think about the worst possible solution, or worst possible situation, when in fact, a lot of times, it doesn't turn out the way as bad as you think it does. This, and I'm giving you a summary at the end, but to try to, I actually have another client where I got the actual claim activity over the previous twelve months for that individual. They had five thousand dollars worth of claims, which actually sort of falls in the middle of the brackets, you know, from the low that I gave you, all the way up to over a hundred thousand dollars of claims, and I think it's a good, a good example of how it can actually turn out. When you go through, and I'll give you a summary at the end, but when you go through the whole claim activity under your current plan design for this sample person, a real person, the net out-of-pocket to the individual after their copays and their premium contributions is twenty-three hundred and fifty-five dollars, question, twenty-three hundred and thirty-five dollars for a twelve-month period of time. If you go to the next slide, this is the H S A out-of-pocket contribution, and this is what we were trying to communicate to employees last year, and, and we understand why there's, you know, some hesitancy to make a change into a plan that's completely different than what has been historically the norm over the past twenty years. When you look at the out-of-pocket on this particular claim example, this five thousand dollars, it was twenty-two hundred and thirty-five dollars of total participant cost. There was no premium contribution, but when you took the seven hundred and fifty dollars that the county was providing in a health savings account, the net effect to the individual was slightly under fifteen hundred dollars, which is better than the current P P O plan. But again, it's a learning process. We provide, I provided you a claim example for the blue options one, two, three plan design, using all the copays and translating that there to this particular claim example, using those copays, using the contribution, and it would be twenty-six hundred dollars in total out-of-pocket expense. The next one was the alternate P P O, the thirty-five seventy slash seventeen hundred fifty-dollar deductible. It would be even higher than the blue options one, two, three example, the twenty, it'd be twenty-six sixty. And when you look at all four possibilities together in this particular claim example, and, you know, we, and I encourage individuals to look at their particular situation with the five thousand dollars in claims in this particular deal, and this was actually what was surprising about this, I did this for another county government, and this particular individual was hesitant about the H S A, and they were in benefits department, when they looked at this, they're like, wow, I didn't really realize that I would actually be better off in the H S A even today than I would be for any of the other three more traditional plan designs. So the natural winners in the H S A are certainly the low utilizers. I would tell you that the people who have extremely high claims activity are also better off in the H S A, but it's, it is a sort of a leap, it's a new education process. But just to give you, sort of to step back, and I know you're probably looking for time to make an informed decision about this, what you're going to find is that the options that are in place today, especially the H S A, are a great benefit option, and even the options that we're providing for ten eleven to meet budgetary requirements, and when I'm sitting in the back, there was actually someone who mentioned to me, please don't change my premiums, right? That is a direct out-of-pocket. If one of your employees said, please don't change my premiums, I think you're going to find that making benefit design changes, while not always enjoyable, is probably going to be all in all the best possible solution. Any questions at all?
Why, why are the insurance companies going away from the copays and going to the co-insurance?
Well, I'm sorry. The reason why is because the traditional copay plan disengages the individual from the cost of the services that they're receiving. What we've seen, and we've got over a dozen clients that have implemented H S As, when people see what the actual cost of the service is, they become better consumers of the healthcare dollar, and because they're better consumers, I actually, we have an H S A at Mark III, and I, and we provide our employees with a nine hundred dollar H S A. I have an employee who, you know, like, got the flu like everybody else, and she had money in her H S A, and when she looked at the cost of Tamiflu, she said, I don't feel that bad, I'll be all right without it. And so that engagement of the individual, that consumerism, where there's opportunity is what changes the whole nature of that product and makes it a long-term, what most of you, is a more competitive product long-term.
Other questions?
I've got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm having real difficulty with the changes as far as our employers, employees are concerned, and have talked to several of them over the last few days, and have you done any studies or have any data as far as, I guess what I'm looking at is the specialist change in particular. Some of the folks that I've talked to, and even doing some research on my own, you know, you may be looking at going to a specialist, and your out-of-pocket would be two or three or four hundred dollars instead of that copay, and if, you know, if we have several employees in the county that are making thirty or forty thousand dollars a year and say, I can't afford to go to this specialist that my doctor's referring me to, you know, do you have any data on that as far as our claims?
I will tell you, in the H S As, there is nothing that shows that participants don't use the physician, that they don't go to the doctor when they need to go. The, this particular product style, I actually have some clients in some other states that are straight deductible and co-insurance, and I hear the public sector, I hear absolutely nothing that says that they are not going to the doctor because of cost. Let me just talk about, and this, I think, is a, is maybe a misunderstanding, and I'll just look at the current plan today. One of the things about this deductible, this thousand-dollar deductible, is that all the copays that employees pay today, whether it's for office visits or for, for medication, don't go towards satisfying that deductible. So if I went to just my primary care and I just had medication, I could rack up, you know, eighteen hundred dollars in a year in copays, and none of that would go towards satisfying my deductible, which is, a lot of times, I mean, you know, the insurance business is complicated, you know, the benefit design business is not always the most straightforward, and I, I speak, I speak English, although my teenagers, I would think, understand me, so sometimes I question that. I have some German background skills, and I speak insurance, and of course, the last two sometimes are really hard to understand. But, but what happens is people don't realize that these copays that they're paying on a daily basis or a weekly or monthly basis don't go towards satisfying that deductible. An individual, and it's always down to the specific person, but if somebody is going to the specialist today, none of that is, that charge never stops for them. They pay that fifty bucks and it keeps going. Under this plan design, they get capped out at a thousand dollars of total charges and for the deductible, and once they go through that, then it's basically that thirty percent until they hit this co-insurance maximum of two thousand bucks. So what I was saying is, I've been in other counties where they were, employees were contemplating, should I take the H S A or should I take the P P O plan, and there were employees who had eighteen hundred dollars in copays, and they didn't really realize how much it was actually costing them until they sat down and thought about it. And this is, you know, it's certainly an education process, and I will tell you that in any benefit design change you make, there will be winners and there will be losers. And there is, what to me is worse is if you said, okay, well, we're going to keep the same benefits, but we're going to charge everybody more, then today, there are probably forty-five percent of your population that wouldn't be impacted by these changes. There will be twenty percent who are the high utilizers who will be impacted, and then, you know, the middle brackets, they could or could not be impacted by your changes, but if you charge everybody more, they will be impacted by those changes.
But the impact, if the county absorbed it, would be two hundred and seventy thousand dollars?
And that's if you, if you pass the cost along equally. To make it completely cost neutral, that means, what you're saying is to make it cost neutral, that is...
For the employee.
For the employee, or no increase at all, that is, that no additional premium and the benefits remain the same will be in excess of two hundred thousand dollars, because the county's increase will be more than the twelve point six five percent. It's going to be in the neighborhood of, I'm just guessing, I haven't done the math, somewhere in the neighborhood of probably thirteen and a half to fourteen percent, and you're probably talking about in the mid-three hundred thousand dollar range.
How often do we offer the H S? Is it just once a year that they can sign up for that?
Right. All of the benefit elections are on annual basis. New hires, when they come in, get to make a decision when they're new hires.
And is it seven hundred and fifty dollars a year that gets put into that account?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Like, if you come in for half a year, you would get half of the seven fifty. We don't give you seven fifty if you come in the middle of the year. We, we kind of rate it out and give you an average. But in August first, the people in H S A will get seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I guess I'm disappointed there's only eighty-nine in this. I'm a firm believer in the H S As, and did I see somewhere that we only had eighty-nine people?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you see that baby ticking up, and as people learn more about this?
The answer would be yes. I've got clients who've had H S As in for four, five years, and their participation is in the mid-fifties. There's, it is, it's a difficult education process, because your people are, the copays are easy. They're simple, they're nice, you know, you pay the copay and you walk away, you don't, but you don't know what the transaction costs, and if a doctor says, well, I want you to run a test, you say, sure, fine, no problem. In an H S A, you do care whether they're running tests, if it makes sense. I'll give you a perfect example. My dad has leukemia, and he was in the hospital, and the, they, apparently, the way this hospital makes money is run as many tests as absolutely possible. They ran an M R I on the lower two-thirds of his lungs for, for whatever the reasons, concerns were, some pulmonary concern. Then they came back and they wanted to run a test, an M R I, for the upper third of the lungs. And I asked, it's like, what's the possibility that he's actually, you're going to find anything? Well, it's one-tenth of one percent. Well, the M R I costs fifteen hundred bucks, you know? So we've been, you know, the beauty of the copay system has been we've been insulated from the cost of the service. The negative of the copay system is we've been insulated from the cost of the service, and I can tell you, I love H S As, I think it's a great tool, but I want to tell you that it is not a, it's not a perfect solution. And back to your point about the, you know, employees who have limited income, the biggest challenge that there is with H S As is not on the office visits, and I will tell you that deductible and the co-insurance for specialists, that won't be the big issue. The issue is copays for pharmacy are still very important, because you can go to the doctor if you have a relationship, and they won't bill you at the time of service, and in most cases, you can go to the hospital, the same situation arises, but if you want the medication, you have to put the money on the table. I don't have any clients who have eliminated, with the exception of one that I took over, which is a hospital, none of them have eliminated a more traditional option with a copay for primary care and copays for pharmacy, but we have a financial reality, and I will tell you, so I get to repeat this discussion about another twenty-nine times, and it's with most of my county clients who are in the same... economic struggles. And I will tell you, a 12.65% increase is a really easy discussion, because I've got some that I got last week that are in the mid-30s. So, it is a difficult challenge, it is a difficult discussion, but in aggregate, I know, you know, I shouldn't, I'm not preaching, but I will say that we all have a financial reality of what we can afford to do. We want to protect employees as much as we can, and I think the options that we're trying to put on the table will give you some options that are not so bad, but I can tell you that employees, most employees would be negatively impacted, most, by premium increases and not by benefit design change. Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Why would some of your clients be at 30% or greater and others at a lesser amount? Is it because of the history of incidences and the cost to a unit, or is it simply none of us look alike, we're all different? And I'm kind of wondering, I'm puzzled about, and I have another part to this, and you can just pick and choose, but, you know, this is overwhelming, and I'm thinking about how everybody is so much more exposed than they've ever been before, and I'm wondering, I think I hear you saying that there are incentives in certain of the plans that help keep the cost down, that we've become spoiled to a degree with co-pays, and a hard reality is beginning to set in, is that, is that so?
Well, it's back to the original question, which is, why is one renewal different than another? It is, unlike the dialogue that's coming out of Washington, your cost of insurance, whether you're fully insured or self-funded, are your claims, the county's claims, plus the cost to run the plan equals your total cost. Whether you're fully insured or self-funded, it is your claims that drive your cost. Now, what's going on within the population, you know, diabetes, you know, significant obesity, cancer, cardiovascular, there's all kinds, musculoskeletal, there's all kinds of issues that drive your claims activity, and it is unique to your organization, but it is also consistent across the counties that I work with. The question, the question back of, you know, are we spoiled? I will use, what I feel like is a good financial analogy, is when gas prices almost two summers ago were at $4 a gallon, we drove less, we considered buying more fuel-efficient vehicles, we changed our habits, when we were exposed to the cost of fuel. When you're insulated, when it's OPM, somebody else is paying the freight, you maybe aren't as great a consumer of the service and aren't as frugal as you could be, and don't ask all the questions that maybe you should. I will tell you that, as I mentioned earlier, the co-pay system is a very easy, clean process, because of pay the co-pay and you're done with the financial piece of it. But unfortunately, people have to be better consumers of the healthcare dollar, and I think the HSA does that for them. The question earlier about, you know, why low participation, I think a high deductible plan is simple in concept, but is difficult in execution. When you're used to the co-pay structure, you want to hold on to that simplicity as long as you can. We all are resistant to change. I think you will find, the longer you go along, you'll see more participation in that HSA, because economically, a lot of your people will be much better off.
Just the savings and what the employee contributions are, you have to consider that also in addition to the $750, but for a single person, you know, they're now contributing $34 a month, whereas the HSA would be different, would be nothing, and so right there's a $408 savings that they could be plugging away somewhere. And you look at the family plan, $100 a month of their, that's $1,200 a year in addition to the $750, so.
And as I mentioned, right out of the box, when you change benefits, there's going to be an emotional response. You know, people are going to respond negatively, they're going to assume the worst possible situation, you know, there's gonna be wailing and gnashing of teeth, and I can completely empathize why that occurs, but you have, sort of have to step back and look at the economics, because I think the HSA is a great solution for many of the employees, not a perfect one, and not maybe the best for everyone, because I've been through situations where it wasn't the best solution. But, you know, there's lots of things that you're trying to balance, you're trying to protect the employees, you're trying to deal with the financial realities that you have, and what the employees have as a financial reality as well. And there's things that employees could be doing, even if they're participating in a traditional PPO plan, and that is participating more in flexible spending accounts. So, there's lots of things that people can do, and unfortunately, change is a catalyst to help us think about different ways of doing things.
When we met with Blue Cross Blue Shield, you know, I asked the same question as to, you know, what's so bad about the co-pays? And I got a history lesson on to what co-pays were designed to do, to begin with, you know, they haven't always been there, but in the early 80s, they came out, and the purpose of it was to get people to go to the doctor when they got sick. And the theory behind it is that overall health would improve, and they would avoid the major claims down the road. Well, after 27 years, I think is what she said, Blue Cross Blue Shield has realized that the co-pays aren't working, that the desired outcome is not there, so they're thinking, well, you know, maybe we gotta put some of the cost back on the employees so that they go do those things to improve their health, and that didn't happen with the co-pays, so. Well, we talk about health wellness about this time of year, and everybody gets excited about health wellness, and then after we do the renewal, it kind of fizzles, but maybe, maybe people will get a little bit more excited about their own health now and taking better care of themselves.
Is our experience at 12%, 12. whatever, projected increase, is that to say that we have been more conservative, or our experience has been better than somebody that's looking at 30, because I'm trying to look at the silver lining here, that maybe we've been making some right calls?
The silver lining is that your claims activity was about at expected. It wasn't nearly as bad as other clients that I have that deserved in the mid-40s. So, the silver lining is it could be a lot worse than where you're at. So, yes, that, the answer is correct, you know, there's very few who aren't seeing eight nines and double-digit increases, only a couple that I can think of are in the low single-digit range. So, yes, you've actually performed not so catastrophically.
I think another thing you gotta remember into this equation, when you start doing all the math, there's a factor in there for what Blue Cross Blue Shield sees as their internal cost of going up and doing business, and medical, for lack of a better word, consumer price index is at 12%. So, there's, they're factoring in that on an annual basis, medical costs are going up 12% anyway. So, you know, even though our claims came in pretty much as expected, you know, we're getting 12% because that's the market right now.
It is.
So, if cost in the medical, and I think that's really what maybe health, healthcare reform should be about, is trying to slow down that trend of cost going up, because that's what's really putting most of us in the hurt, so.
Well, Mr. Crompton, the recommendation here, and this comes from management, from the county manager's office, is to approve the changes to the Lee County Health Plan as presented, and therefore, I gather that you've worked, you and your staff, looking at these options that we have, and that, all things considered, you are recommending that we approve these changes to save $271,000. I mean, that, I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
No, that's what I'm over here for.
Yeah, but that, but nobody's comfortable with any of these-
No, sir.
-horrendous costs, but nevertheless, this is where you come out, and this is what you would recommend.
No, my recommendation would be, you know, after weighing a lot of things, mainly cost and how it's gonna affect the employees, would be go with the PPO, blue options 1, 2, 3, leaving the Medicare supplement as-is and the HSA as-is. And I looked at the other options, you know, to say that, you know, we would cover the increase and keep the plan exactly the way it is, I'd hate to get down the road into the budget and that $270, $300,000 hanging over our head, and we can't change it because we made that commitment. You know, we're looking at a small COLA, we're looking at the increase in the retirement from the, from the state treasurer for the retirement system, that's about $110,000 and some change, right around there for us, so we're seeing employee costs go up, so at some point, you know, we either have to find cuts in other areas of the budget, or, you know, we have to do our best with the benefits at this time, so.
Any other questions?
I would, I would just feel better with us taking a little bit more time with this, because this is gonna affect all of our employees in a major way. You know, just, just to hear the presentation today, and it's been very informative, and I appreciate it, but, you know, just to hear the presentation today, and just, you know, the few days that I've had to look over this and talk to employees, I just don't feel comfortable voting on it today without, you know, a little bit more discussion and research on it.
How much more?
We can hold off to the first meeting of April, but at that point, we would need to go ahead and make a move, and that way, we can go ahead and do open enrollment in May as scheduled.
Okay. You want to put that in a form of a motion to table this?
Motion to table.
Okay, until-
April 1st.
April 1st, and we'll have time to have more conversations and learn a bit more about this. Any questions about that?
I would say, my company's going, it was 26% non-ophicular, and it is a trend.
It's a trend that's not gonna change, Medicare went up, and it didn't increase our pay either.
Before you go with the motion to table, because there's no discussion there, what are you proposing? HR, you've been involved in this whole process, and you're supporting the recommendation?
Yes, sir, I am.
And have you had a lot of questions or opposition to the plan?
We have, we sent out, Mr. Crompton sent out Mass Miller and explained to people, we sent it out to all the department heads and asked them to discuss it with the employees. I've had four inquiries about it.
Okay.
And the concern was, one person's concern was the specialist, and that was all that I've heard about that. Other concerns were, what are my premiums gonna be? That is a big concern of employees, if we change something where their premiums go up, they're real concerned about that. But, that's pretty, I've had maybe four people approach-
I've had a few. You know, we, a couple weeks ago, put on the Intranet site a way for employees to send me anonymous comments or suggestions, and I've had a few. And mainly, it's about the cost to them, and then the issues of the specialist. And as I told you today, I'm in the same boat. You know, right now, I'm, I'm going to a specialist on average about six times a year right now, and so, you know, I would be in the same boat as these employees, so I understand that, but I also understand that our budget, we have no growth in the tax base and sales taxes, I wouldn't bank on them coming back anytime soon, so we just have a tough, we just have a tough thing going forward with the budget.
The other plan that Mark presented was with the higher specialist co-pay, but that pushes that deductible way up there. A hospital stay could cost an employee $3,750 if they have nothing else, right up front. It's pretty steep.
Yeah, that 30, and in talking with Blue Cross Blue Shield, you know, you wish you could like mix and match some of the coverages and say, can you, can we do this and can we do that? Well, it's more difficult than that, because they have to process claims, so they try to, they try to standardize the packages now, where you can't pick and choose those things anymore, so since we're fully insured, we can only pick from that menu of things that they, that they offer. If we were self-insured, we'd be looking at 28% increase, but if we were self-insured, we could pick, we could pick those, you know, those items, and we could customize things a little bit better, so, you know, there's an advantage to being, you know, fully insured, and normally, that's, you do get some pooling effect with other members in the Blue Cross Blue Shield book of business, but when you're on your own, you're on your own.
It's the equivalent of, and I'm not in opposition to waiting, but it's the equivalent of the gas analogy. When gas is $4 a gallon and I'm riding with somebody else, I got a lot of places I want to go. If I'm buying.
Great. You don't expect it to come down a whole lot.
That's right.
Can we look at some options, like if we could just, one time only, to start this with an HSA, go a little bit higher than $750, still save money, but that gives them a little cushion of getting, that first year's deductible in there, and then with what they save in their premiums, by not paying premium, well, you know-
Premium staying the same.
No, they don't, well, a single person will pay, but-
They don't pay anything.
An HSA, they go down about $100 a month.
What, what are you seeing with the contributions?
Well, I've got clients who vary between 500, $750, and I've got one that does $1150, but that's a total HSA client. I haven't seen huge differential between the $250 additional contribution. What really drives participation in the HSAs is that premium payment on the other side for the plan options. So, I think you could raise it, would you get the full effect of the additional $250 for each participant that goes into it? It may be a wash, it may be a wash, but I can't guarantee you that you're gonna get necessarily the desired effect. I think the changes in the plan design would make employees look a lot harder at it. And the other thing is that, I look at sustainability, and the $750, I think, is a good contribution. You could bump that up some, but I try as much as possible to keep the contribution consistent, so that employees can bank on that being there year after year.
What they save in their employee contribution, whether they're single, you know, married or family, whatever those three were, in 12 months' time, very much with the $750 we contribute, got your deductible met.
About $300 and some dollars, I think it is.
Yeah, and then, you know, you start over again, and so, I just hope our employees will take another look at that.
It's kind of got that spread out that Mr. Ratter gave us, that we have very few people hitting $3,000. One thing that you have to remember too, when they're paying that 30%, it's of what Blue Cross and Blue Shield negotiated down, where the office visit might be $400. Had someone talk about that the other day, I said, but that's what the doctor charges, but Blue Cross and Blue Shield's gonna go in and negotiate that down, it might be $160. I'm in HSA, and I've seen that, where they, my bill was this much, and then I get over here, I pay $50. And when you hit that deductible, I wanted to tell you, that 20% is nice, where your co-pay on medicine might have been $50, now I'm paying $20 because I'm at my 20%.
At what age, for the employees, is it an HSA really not, is there?
It actually is more dependent on the health of the individual, not necessarily age. Obviously, the older we get, the more health issues we have. But, the other, the other piece of the other side of this is that the protection that the HSA affords is somebody who has significant claims activity will be much better off in an HSA if they can handle that first few months of cash flow challenge, because their total out-of-pocket is gonna be significantly less than you would see in a traditional co-pay plan. The other thing that I want to point out is, you know, we're sort of focused on the negatives, but that blue options 1, 2, 3 actually does lessen the liability to the participant by lowering the co-insurance maximums from $3,000 for singles, $6,000 for a family, down to $2,000 and $4,000. I will tell you that insurance is really wrapped around, you transfer risk that you cannot afford to retain, you retain that of which you can. Insurance is not designed, in essence, to pay for every expense that occurs, it's designed to protect you against a catastrophic loss. I would tell you that the option with blue options 1, 2, 3 protects your employees against the catastrophic loss, as does the HSA.
Have you heard anything, either one of you, that would help you to believe that, other than, are listening to employees and better understanding how they're feeling about this, is there any solution here, any other option that you're hearing? What I'm trying to say is, we're gonna come back to this on April the 1st, and I don't think we're gonna probably want to go through this much, but we're gonna have to make a decision, and I just wanted to ask Mrs. Dowrump, would you continue to wish to have this table and come back to it then, or have you, have we learned something here that-
I'm being hard-headed, I still would like to have some more time to think about it.
I don't, I don't mind it being tabled, actually, I think that's a good thing to, you know, allow the employees and the retirees to take a look at it, and have, you know, if we want to have some discussions with them, that's fine, I don't have a problem with it. I do think there was, you know, we, I even talked to Mark about bidding, but you don't go out to bid when you've had a bad year. But you don't go out to bid when you've had a bad year, so, you know, you, you want to bid when you have a good year.
But didn't we have a better year than other people, though?
Yes, but it's, you had a better year than other people, but the other.
There's still a bad one.
But the, the other situation is, yeah, it's, it's still not a fantastic year, so.
And another thing, what's, sorry.
Well, one thing, it was 28%, but he went back and what was it, because the shield got down.
Negotiated, right with the whole, okay, that's wrong. That's wrong.
And I think putting the employees through a change again would be difficult.
See, yeah.
You know, you're, you're changing companies and going through all of that, and not all the companies do these things the same way. It can be, that can be just as much of a heartache on the employees, traumatic.
I, I, I don't have a problem with what you want to do. I, I don't want us to create a situation where inexperienced and little with any knowledge about insurance folks are coming to the staff and, and just dragging it on, dragging it out. That's a concern that, that I have. I think we've got to go with the recommendations that we get. And it's incumbent upon each individual to figure out what's best for, for them and not, you know, get too far out there thinking that we can cater to everyone's needs.
I understand that, but I mean, we changed it last year, and now we're changing it again.
My question is, if they come back next month and we've got the same proposal in front of us, I mean, there's no, there's not a chance it's going to change, I don't think.
That's right.
So we're going to have the same proposal in front of us next month, we've got this month.
You can see a trend that all these insurance companies are pushing towards HSAs.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, it might be that there is another change next year, and, and you're sitting right here again and saying, you know, it's, it's time to go to HSAs. But I, I don't think, there won't be people that pick up more costs and have a dog in the fight, and that's what's going on.
Well, let me ask again, as a, as a courtesy, if you wish to table it, I think probably there are willing spirits here, but I think I certainly do hear the goodly number of commissioners saying, the inevitable is upon us, and we need to go ahead and, and do that. So you, you made a motion to table. You hold to that?
Hold to it, yes, sir.
Okay, all in favor of tabling this and resolving it at the April 1st?
I think it'll be April 4th.
4th meeting, please say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, we have, the matter will be tabled, the majority rules, and thank you very much. There were two nays, and I believe.
There was three nays.
Three nays. Okay. Yeah, didn't see your hands, so it's four to three, and we will look forward to seeing you again, I think. Okay, the next item on our agenda, as we move right along, Mr. Brenson, I'm sorry.
Four, three, three nays.
Three nays and four.
I believe, I believe, three nays.
Mr. Pascal, Mr. Aldum, and Mr. Kelly voted nay.
Okay, Mr. Brenson.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. The Board of Commissioners has delegated the power to hear appeals to a Board of Equalization move. A lot of members' terms have expired this year. We're very proactive in trying to involve all citizens and get as many applications in as possible. In the tax office, we have an email news list, which I've included the board on, and it includes about 400 email addresses. So I sent out the information, the application to that email list. I put it on our Facebook and Twitter pages, and Mrs. Lee put also an ad in the Herald, too. So we have been very, very proactive in trying to get applications in. If you look on page 95 of your packet, you can see we have four regular members whose terms are expiring, two of which have turned in another application to re-serv. We also have two alternate members whose terms have expired, of which one has reapplied. And we also have additional applications in your packets. Now entertain any questions the board may have.
Okay, any questions, any motions?
How we're going to do this, Mr. Chairman, we're going to try to fill up the, looks like we actually have two vacancies, and then go back and pull some alternates, pull some alternates.
Well, it's my understanding that that would be the simplest thing, that there are two.
Well, you've got four vacancies. You've got two people that reapplied.
Right, two reapplied and two didn't.
Right, but you've really still got four vacancies, is what you have.
Yeah, but I think the thrust of your question and perhaps the possibility is that we move two alternates up.
Right.
And who would be willing to take a full-time position, so to speak? And then we have to pull in from our pool of applicants, new reserves, is this, is that?
That's, yeah, that's the gist.
Would you want to put that in a form of a motion?
What I'd like to, is we have two that have agreed to serve Cindy Adams and Drew Lucas, and I motioned that we move them up into the active table.
All right.
And you've got a couple of others here that have been here since 1995, and we're getting ready to discuss, you know, getting ready to move people around, so, you know, I'd like to, to, to see, you know, we've got one here that was just, has just been on since 2009, that was a temporary. But then maybe moving some of those alternates up.
Oh, that's what we're saying, two.
But, but, you know, the 1995, that's, that's a long time.
I would move that Ms. Denise Pully, page 102, now be moved as an alternate. You'd like to add an alternate.
All right, that takes care of one of the alternates, and, okay, another.
How about, along with Denise, I would move Gwen Maples up to an alternate, and that'll fill that.
All right, Gwen Maples to an alternate. Unless there's other motions, that that would take care of the two alternates that need to be replaced. And then who would move up to the, from alternate to the board?
I think you need to vote in all of them.
We've had Cindy Adams and Drew Lucas moved to the board, then Commissioner Reeves nominated Denise Pully and the Gwen Maples.
All right, you want to make that in a form of a motion?
Yes, sir, I do make that in a form of a motion.
So are we going to not consider the ones that have been on there for like 20 years, or?
They did not, two did not submit applications.
I know that they're all up.
Well, but you've already filled two of the ones that didn't submit. You've got two people, two alternates that moved up, so you've got two others that are still there who asked to be reappointed.
Reappointed.
That's right.
And, and I would just, you know, like to have, Gaynell, did you call these other alternates that didn't send in? Because not everybody reads the Herald.
I called, I called all of the current members.
The alternates also?
Yes, ma'am.
And none of them were?
The ones who, the ones whose terms were expiring, I called all of them.
Okay, but what about the ones whose terms were not expiring? If they knew that they could move up to the board rather than remaining an alternate, that's what I'm saying, it'd be nice to be, to check all three of those.
Right, I did not call Ms. Ammons, Mr. Lucas, or Mr. McDonald.
I confirmed that Ms. Ammons and Mr. Lucas, and that's what they would be willing to change for me.
Mrs. Ammons and, and Mr. Lucas.
We had sort of a conversation, I mean, I think it was about the Airport Authority, that, you know, some of these, these positions, we want to, you know, get some new blood on there. And, you know, you've got two people or three people on there that's been, been there for 20 years. I think that's, might be time for somebody to have a seat.
Well, let, let me just take a crack at that, and I think you're, you're quite right. On the other hand, this one is upon us, and we have, the, the next item that we'll talk about are a slew of vacancies that are coming up in June. And I wanted to use the occasion to talk about that very point, about what we need to do to make sure that term limits are utilized, and, and that.
Can we have that conversation first instead of?
Yeah, it appears that it would simplify things if we looked at Martin McLeod as one slot going, and Mr. Matthews as the second slot going.
Right.
And we just moved up two alternates, so you're still just dealing with two seats. So I don't understand what all the delay is about. Either you reappoint them, or you offer up candidates for those who want to see a change.
Well, as I understand it, that's what we're talking about, and the two that are, that would remain, Mr. Hinks and Mr. Adcock. Mr. Adcock's been on the board since 95. And I think he and Mr. Hinks have both indicated what a willingness, a desire to continue to serve. The next item that we're going to talk about is one that would take place and, well, we would be talking about it and might come back to us at the next meeting to fine-tune our procedures and to impose term limits. That would be a little bit more effective than we have right now. My only concern was, and it's your pleasure, that I think we've got in the Board of Equalization a sort of ready solution with willing spirits to move, to, to stand for another period of time. And I don't know that, I'm in a position to call out anyone because they've served such a long time. That's almost like grandfathering. But I can see where, on this next item, we would be beginning to deal with the process of term limits and, and make, make it a little more definitive, so I hope that hadn't confused you.
Dwayne, will this board be meeting before our next commissioner?
This board will be meeting the last week in April, probably.
Okay. So here's what I'd like to have Gaynell do, if the board is willing, is to verify with all three of the alternates who's actually.
Just two alternates.
All of the alternates, to see if they would all be willing, and then take the top two that, you know, have been going all this time. Would you say?
Well, because we've got one that's been there since 2007 who reapplied.
That's Mr. Sloan?
Mm-hmm.
Sloan. Well, I'll only make this comment regarding Mr. Adcock. Outside of perhaps Mr. Hal Solid, I don't know anyone who has any more history about land in Lee County than those two individuals. I can certainly see the benefit of having that much knowledge about all the property here continuing to serve, if he's able to do so, and I would so recommend. It's wonderful to have new blood, but if it's all over the road, then that's not much, so.
Okay, we've got a motion on, we have a law, and let's, we have a motion on the floor.
Let's move it on.
And, and.
What is the motion?
The motion is to move Cindy Adams and Drew Lucas up into Agnew.
And to reappoint Mr. Adcock.
Reappoint Mr. Adcock, and to move, what was yours? Denise Pully, alternate one, and Gwen Maples, alternate two, however you want to.
All right. Mr. Hinks stays, yeah.
I ain't into that. I made mine.
He's, his application, what is, what's Mr. Hinks status, Gaynell? He. We have an application, so he wishes, yeah, Mr. Hinks.
Now, Mr. Sloan also applied and expressed interest in staying on the board. So do we extend his service as an alternate?
Yes. Under this motion.
Okay.
Mr. Sloan would continue to serve as an alternate under your motion.
Right.
Yeah.
What we're doing, place of two.
All right, there's a motion on the floor.
And, Mr. Chair, if we, keeping Mr. Sloan, adding Mrs. Pully and Mrs. Maples, and keeping Mr. McDonald, would give us four.
Yeah, that's what we need, right?
Need five.
Need five, then we need to pull, we need to pull one more forward, right? Would they, one more alternate.
Do we have one up now?
Denise Pully and, you mean, one up in Agnew?
Yeah.
Cindy Adams and Drew Lucas.
And, and.
Let me be, Mr. Beckler?
Vogler, Bill Vogler.
We appointed him to another board now, too, I don't know.
I don't remember.
Let's go with Mr. Vogler.
Okay, Mr. Vogler is the, the last alternate to move in. Okay, all in favor of the motion as described, please say aye.
What is it?
Oh, okay. Mr. Aldum, we're going to make you work.
You want me to do it again?
Do it one more time.
To move Cindy Adams, Drew Lucas up into the active, and Mr. Adcock would remain, and to.
And Mr. Hinks.
He would remain, Mr. Hinks, yeah. And to take Denise Pully and Gwen Maples, and could we name another one for, an alternate? Who was the other alternate?
Alan Sloan and Bill Vogler.
Okay.
And Denise Pully.
Yep, as always.
All right.
Is that right, Dwayne? Is that numbers?
Well, Mr. Matthews is not serving again, so we'll need a vice chair. If you're, if you're electing Mr. Adcock to serve as chairman, we'll need a vice chair, too.
They don't decide that?
They do that.
They can appoint them.
They may be doing.
All right, you've heard the motion for the last time. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? There is no opposition, thank you very much.
Yeah, we did, we didn't do the vice chair. We'll fight it out. They'll get there.
The next item is on page 104. And. Okay, yes, sir.
I'd like to put Mr. Hinks in as vice chair, just in case. He says we need to appoint a vice chair, too, so.
Mr. Hoel, you, you say we have to, we need to appoint a vice? Uh-huh. If we, if we choose.
Your resolution.
Okay, if we choose to let them select their vice chair, is that, that's, that's essentially what we've. Yeah, that's, that's, that's where we are. We want to give them an opportunity here, thank you. Okay, on page 104, you'll see there, and the public has the opportunity to see if they wish to look at our agenda, the great number of boards and committees that are coming up to be refreshed, with new members to be added, and those vacancies that will come up in June are itemized there. And so this is the occasion to simply do several things. One, to remind ourselves that we're coming into that season of opportunity. And second, to say to our citizens of the community that we urge people to watch the papers, be aware of this opportunity, and these committees and boards to sign up and to be willing to help us, help our citizens. So we're, we're asking for volunteers, I think in a way like never before, to say, please come forward, please let us know who you are, and apply to the board or boards of your choice over the next three months when the opportunity is made known publicly. And that, this is sort of the, the beginning of that process. The other thing that I, I wanted to add is that there is talk from time to time about term limits. Everybody I know, at one point or another, will say, term limits are good and should be, should be a, a part of life, that if you do not have them, you run the risk of sort of becoming monolithic, having a, a group of people that continue and continue and continue with no fresh thinking and ideas. Now, having said that, there are people that can serve many years and bring blessed advice, and we have some of those. So, and I'll turn, I'll stop my little solo in just a second, but what I was trying to lead up to is, we need to look at our procedures, and I have copies here that I wanted to hand out, and especially to have you look at item D, where we talk about term limits. And this is not necessarily to be resolved today, but I wanted to. And this is not necessarily to be resolved today, but I wanted to put it in place so that maybe at least by the next meeting, we might feel comfortable, you would feel comfortable, in perhaps accepting or modifying this. And my thoughts are this, that this D says unless otherwise stated, all terms of office, where terms of office are determined by the Board of Commissioners shall be three years. With three-year terms, an individual would normally serve a maximum of two terms. So there is a limit right there. There may be, there is in fact, one board, and I'm not sure if there are any others, that have no limits on terms. And I would think that this is a time and place, it certainly would seem to me, that we would amend this to say simply that all boards fall under this procedure, and that all boards are subject to three-year terms and not to exceed two terms. And then, and this can be word-crafted by Mrs. Lee to help us or Mr. Crumpton, but that then one would lay out for a term, and if they wish to come back, they would certainly have the privilege to do that. And by all means, after two terms of three years each, we would graduate these individuals with great applause and thanks for a job well done. The whole point being that we would then be opening the door, I hope, for more people to step forward and say, it's not a locked system, there is opportunity for new blood and people to get on board, and that the people who had served six years would be very pleased to give up their seats and step back for at least one term until they came back. So that's kind of what we could change in this, to sort of fine-tune it and make sure that, that all boards that we are involved with, that we appoint members to, are working according to the same set of rules.
Why are we limiting ourselves? All that is, is limiting us as to what we can do. You just had, you just appointed somebody, I mean, two people that have been on the board for twenty years, and the, you know, what we just talked about, it was, well, you know, they've got a lot of experience.
In the future, they would, they would not serve again because they've already served the max, but...
I know, but what I'm trying to get at is, you're limiting the Board of Commissioners as to making that call and saying, you know, these guys are worth having on this board because they do have so much knowledge. You know, or, you know, all right, guys, it's time for somebody else.
Well, how would you not cause the sort of conformity to the, to our procedure that presently exists? In other words, should not all boards toe the same line? All boards should be...
I don't think it's, it matters. I mean, how many boards, there's so many boards that we can't even fill. So if you have, what do you do when you have, you know, a five-member board or a seven-member board, you've got five board members that actually want to serve, and then, you know, you can't fill the two spots, but the five have run two consecutive terms and they all had to go?
Well, I think that's what this discussion is about, and it may be that by opening it up, we would encourage new people to sign up and maybe...
And let them come sit here, too?
Well, the other, the other thing that might be added to this process is that if there are not people who apply, then we would have a caveat that says you would, we would hope that you would stay on. So, you know...
Which boards do we have no term limits?
The Airport Authority.
And the EDC.
And the EDC.
See, I think that gets back to what Mr. Reeves has brought up several times, you know? And looking at that board and looking at what's going on, we need to make, we're looking at some changes, I think. Maybe some new blood.
But you're saying, make them, and don't, don't, don't put a year or term limit.
You've got to have, you need to have the option of reusing the resources that you have available to you, because in some situations, for example, the health board in particular, you may have specific categories that are required by statute that must be filled.
A position.
If you can't get a pharmacist, if you can't get a dentist or a doctor, then there's nothing wrong with having a regular citizen fill that slot until such time a person is available, or comes forward. Otherwise, you may not be able to get a quorum to carry on business at all.
That's right.
As long as you don't cut your own throat.
Right. Well, here's, here's some words that, in preparation for this discussion, I wanted y'all just to think about, and again, we can table this and conclude it next time or whenever, it's your pleasure. This, we might amend D to, or add to it, to say something to this effect. No citizen may serve more than, more than the two-year or three-year term limit as stated in the bylaws unless there are no eligible or interested individuals wishing to serve, at which time, if the current appointee wishes to continue serving, they may do so until such time that an eligible qualified individual submits an application for consideration. And as one other little part to that, the board will only consider citizens for which there is a current application on file. We really do want to encourage these applications every time a person reruns, that they update their information, and if they don't, then they're not following the procedure.
I think that's a new point. Really, I think you form votes and you put whoever you want on the board. I mean, that's what we do.
Well, I'd like to...
Mine is, is serving the pleasure.
That's what I agree. And I mean, all it does is limit the county commissioners.
We still need to work within the parameters of what we have to work with.
Yeah. Well, we do have a procedure, so guide us, guide me.
The only other thing I would add to that procedure would be, in the event that we are perhaps pursuing a change in zoning or transportation, a project that requires the current, yeah, experienced group to continue working until such time is completed, whatever the project might be.
Yeah.
When we were doing the UDO, there were some people who had reached their point in time, but they had already started the UDO. Didn't make any sense to put new people on and try to start from scratch. So you need to have that kind of option at your disposal at all times.
Mr. Reeves, would you be willing to work with Mr. Crumpton in helping us fine-tune this?
Yeah, I am.
Okay. And come back to us at the next meeting with that fine-tuning or recommendation so that we can move forward with this. Thank you. Thank you very much, everyone. The next item, request for relocation of recovery zone economic development bond authorization. Mrs. Minter.
Good afternoon. When Mr. Cole was here from Davenport and talked to you about the financing scheme for the high school project, he mentioned towards the end of his presentation, the recovery zone economic development bonds.
Financing scheme.
Sorry. Let me say funny.
I was hoping I'd just went right by y'all.
Pick a different word. Financing plan. I know better than to use the red ink in my presentations, because I learned a long time ago that that meant things that looked good, so we don't use red ink, even though I'm NC State graduate. Schemes slip by me. Financing plan for the high school project.
Order, order.
He did mention the possibility of doing recovery zone economic development bonds, and I asked them to look at the possibility of what we might would save if we did that. Recovery zone economic development bonds, unlike the QSAV and the SCABs, are tax credit bonds, where, and so how it would work is we would pay a taxable interest rate, so our interest rate on the bonds would be higher, but we would receive a forty-five percent rebate from the federal government of the interest we pay. Now, I understand that we would be relying on the federal government to continue their program. BBNT has offered us an early payout if we go this route, and refinancing if that were to ever happen. But we felt like you need to see the numbers and know what you were looking at if we were to be able to get a whole twelve million. We did decline the allocation we received last year, which was in the four million, four point three million dollar range. However, there was a lot sent back in, so the year is a team that is looking at reallocation requests. So we are asking that we be allowed to submit a reallocation request of twelve million dollars, which is the remaining piece that we need to finance for this project. And then depending on how much we get, we will be coming back to you for the final approval of this. There will be public hearings and everything held, so there will be time to act on this if we do get it. But if you look at page one-ten of your package, you can see that we could save potentially just under one point one million dollars if we were to use recovery zone economic development bonds, based on the current rates at this time, which are in line with what we would be looking at with the financing with BBNT, by using either a regular state bank installment financing or going with the recovery zone economic development bonds. So I talked to Mr. Crumpton, and we felt like it would be up to you. We wanted y'all to have the opportunity to decide if you wanted to pursue this or not.
Yeah, the last time we discussed this, I wasn't real high on these, and Mr. Cole actually went back, and I think they've now done one or two of them, and have a couple more counties on, on the plan to do this. So they're starting to feel more comfortable with them, the banks feel more comfortable with them, and I still was a little leery until we had some commitment from BBNT that if anything were to happen where they quit paying, federal government would, then we could refinance. Of course, we'd have a little interest rate risk there with where interest rates were, but, you know, a million dollars is a million dollars. So I thought it was worth applying for.
So all you're asking for is, is to apply it, and if we learn a little bit more about it, we don't really have to, we just want to see how much is there?
Right.
See if they'll, see if they'll, you know, go for it.
If they don't go for the twelve million, what are we settled for?
We would see what we get as of, they meet March fifteenth, so that's the reason we're trying to get the application, or the request approved today and the resolution. We would see what we do get, and then ask Davenport to run those numbers for us, and then, of course, we will come back to you with the financial plan for the three or four pieces that it would take, and let you make the decision on which route you wanted to go.
And you would conceivably fill the gap with commercial.
We would do a regular bank qualified installment financing and tax and sound financing.
Can we backtrack to page one oh six?
Yes, ma'am, one oh six. Yes, ma'am?
The second, whereas. I'm a little nervous when there's about eight million there that we say is expected. Is that expected, or how sure are we on that?
We have got our financing in place for those two pieces and have been approved.
We do?
BB, we are going with BBNT. It looks at this time that we will be going with BBNT for all pieces of the financing. They are one, if not the only, player in the market that is willing to do each and every piece that we're looking at. And so we have gotten the permission from the local government commission not to have to go out to bid because there is nobody else out there that is participating in all of the markets that we are looking at. And we have the issue of, we only have one property that we're working on, which makes it difficult from a collateral standpoint. Everybody who would want to do anything would want that whole piece of property. So it makes it very difficult to try to divide this thing up. But the main reason is because BBNT is the only player in the market willing to do all the pieces that we need to take advantage of.
So if the federal government doesn't do their rebate, and we have to refinance with BBNT, what rate are we looking at there?
It would depend on the timing, the rates of the time.
It'd be a lot more than four point eight nine, or...
That's the market risk you run.
That's the risk that you're taking.
And let me explain, what they've actually said is if the subsidiary program is stopped or changed, if we refinance with them, they would, it would be a hundred percent payoff. If we go to another bank to refinance, then we would pay a premium to pay off the loan at a hundred and one percent. So if we stay with BBNT, it's a straight payoff, early payoff. If we were to move the financing, then we would be paying a slight premium to pay off the loan early.
And would you say it's so that as, if we stay with BBNT, as these, as this market solidifies with these twelve million dollars, that we might be looking at even a greater savings than we are anticipating at the moment, the whole package?
I don't know that you would see rates come down. The feds raised the rate recently, so, you know, I'm not, I would, I'm skeptical of rates coming down. I think what we've got is probably, the rates we're looking at, I won't say they won't, you know, we're telling them, we're constantly, we're constantly in contact with BBNT, and I will be seeing them this week at a conference, and we'll try to negotiate the best we can, but I will tell you that I think we've probably got as good a rates as what we're going to see, but, you know, we'll work on it.
And when roughly will that sort of lock in?
We have forty-five, they will give us a rate, a locked-in rate forty-five days prior to our closing date. So we are looking at trying, we'll get LGC approval if all goes well, their meeting in May, which is the first part of May. So we are hoping to close within a couple weeks of that. So first of April, we hope to have our locked rates.
Are there any other programs that we've seen like this over a course of time that we can look at that and say, well, you know, they quit funding that program?
I am not aware of any, and, you know, Bob Hi, and who's with the Treasurer's Department, you know, LGC and Treasurer's Department for years, has not brought anything of concern to us. So, and, you know, I talked to Mark Poole with the Commerce and asked him, when I was asking for the real application, you know, what his opinion of the program was, and, you know, his opinion is that, you know, once the federal government's, you know, now that they've put this out there, that they will, you know, continue the funding of it.
I guess the thing that makes me real nervous here is you look at the interest amount in the BBNT traditional financing, and what we would be paying, that's like five thousand dollars, five million dollars more in that total. Wait, wait, go down to year one. That's four hundred, what, four hundred thousand dollars more in a year? And if it takes them eighteen months to get us our rebate, that's a cash flow problem for us, isn't it?
And we could float eighty-two thousand, what you're looking at, the savings or that, you know?
What I'm looking at is taxable interest.
Right, there's a difference of approximately fourteen thirteen thousand.
And so if, you know, we pay our interest once a year, and if we have to wait...
Be twice a year, but it'd be a one-time request for reimbursement, I believe.
And I want to know if that's going to be twelve months later before we get that, because that could be, present a cash problem, cash flow problem.
Well, that's actually a good question, because I'm not real sure when, when that's done, but I know there are some folks out there who have already done it, so...
Well, it's a cash inconvenience problem, but it's not a cash flow problem, is it?
It would not be a cash flow problem, it would, you're right, it'd be a tax inconvenience problem, but that, again, that's one reason we keep our fund balance at the level we keep it at, is to be able to help us through these things, so I don't anticipate...
You have to pay the interest before you get the rebate back. So you're paying out nine hundred and seventeen, almost nine hundred and eighteen thousand, as opposed to five eighty-seven, and then you're hoping that sometime soon you get four hundred and thirteen thousand of that back.
I will check into the timing process of the interest rebates before we bring it back to you.
Okay. Any other discussion, motion?
I just got one quick question. So, is it, about drop-dead deal, once you're in, you're in, or what are we actually saying?
Right here, all you're doing by this resolution is allowing myself and John to do the appropriate paperwork and file the reapplication. This resolution has to go with it to show your intent of funding the project, and I'll sue the track team for consideration. We are not locked in, even if we get that allocation, until we do the paper, until we adopt the final resolution.
All right, so we're asking for what we want, which is twelve. If they come back and offer us four or five, or six...
I mean, you're cutting your savings pretty substantially there, and it would be up to you if you want them to run that risk.
All right, but we have Davenport.
Yes.
And we had the opportunity to look at that and make a decision.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I got a motion.
Okay.
We will approve the resolution as presented.
All right, the motion's been made to approve. Thank you very much for discussion. I think all points have been well made and received. Thank you. All in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? There's no opposition, thank you. Passes unanimously. The next item, Mrs. Minter, stay with us. The next item, Mrs. Minter, stay with us.
I don't think I understand you. My head is.
Do you want to do the resolution first, or you just want to jump into hers and then do the resolution last?
Which, oh. Oh, I, yeah, okay. That would be fine. I've got it located here. From the consent agenda, is that the one we're, yeah. All right, that was item G under the consent agenda, and it's a resolution in support of... Well, I think it was Mr. Reeves that wanted to pull it, so we'll pause just for a second. Page 58, if you moved it to the back, or you kept it, but...
I know there was some wording already that it's been suggested that we change. And I think it was discussed at the last meeting, and I just missed it. But at the, at the top, where it says against perpetrators of violent crimes by the 11th Judicial District Attorney, as opposed to say by the District Attorney of the 11th Judicial District. And I made the same mistake down under 1, 2, 3, 4, the fifth whereas, where I said the same thing again, encourage the, it's supposed to be the District Attorney of the 11th Judicial District. So we do need to make that change, because that does not look right.
Is that what he's?
That's one change. I don't know what else he would like to change.
All right. Let's, Ms. Lee, if you'll take note of those changes, so that when we, you know, we can understand all changes to be made and approved. Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
Join us on, let's see, page 58, 58, 59. We wanted to talk about this resolution on violent crime, and you, so talk to us.
I have certainly given it considerable thought since the last meeting. And it really bothers me that we're looking at a situation where, what quite frankly is an imperfect system all the way around. If we're going to do a resolution to talk about crime, then we at least ought to be courteous enough not to single any one group out and include everyone, or just offer a resolution that says we're against crime, and we will do all within our powers. This is not a matter that, as is currently written, it's not one that the District Attorney has a lot of authority in or control over. You know, if you stop and think about it, the process involved includes law enforcement, the magistrate's office, the judge, the District Attorney's office, the judges, and the legislature. And unless all things come together, then you're not likely to have the perfect solution. Excuse me. You know, for example, we're talking about doing away with plea bargaining. Can you imagine what would happen if you, if somebody took you up on that recommendation? You talk about having a backlog, and you talk about paying for things. That's what you wind up doing. In addition to the fact that it's really, the intent was there to help eliminate some of the costs and expenses that were involved in it. Quite frankly, in many cases, most of us sitting here, given the right or wrong situation, would be looking for a plea bargain, as opposed to going and suffering with whatever the full or the maximum amount would be. This resolution really doesn't do, I don't think, what it was intended to do. And maybe somebody has a different opinion, can tell me what it was, but this one I think ought to be pulled. And not, and, and as the, the second, when dealing with the deal, we're sending it to, it appears to be, we're sending that to the delegation. Why wouldn't we be sending this to the delegation before we make a decision? To get their input on the subject matter.
I think there was a lot of outrage with some of the recent plea bargains for some of these people who have been repeat, repeat, repeat. And I don't know whether that was the intent of what this was or not, but I would like... And all we're doing here is saying, as a, you know, community or as a county, we would like to see, you know, I think less plea bargaining of some of these violent crimes of repeat offenders. Now, that last one I can remember is the one who attacked the handicapped person in Broadley. And he had been a repeat offender, and...
Well, I think in fairness, the problem you have is that because the average, ordinary citizen doesn't fully understand what the law allows, it's unfair to say that, even in that one example, it's unfair to say that the District Attorney or the judge didn't do their job, because the law allows certain things to be eliminated or reduced. That's what the General Assembly has set in place. And if we're going to tackle the issue and offer up a recommendation, we at least ought to have their input prior to doing so, or at least have them review what we're talking about. This seems to single out just one body.
So, would you?
I move to pull it or strike it, or both?
And shall we, beyond that point, would you have a suggestion or recommendation as to how? Should we then take this up in a more thoughtful, comprehensive manner?
Well, I would ask that it be referred to legal, and from there, shared with the legislative delegation for input, and then come before this board for consideration.
Satisfied? Mrs. Shook?
I'm pretty dead, but no, I think so. I would actually...
I'm looking out for you.
Thank you. I would like to, I guess, maybe talk with the District Attorney and just get some... And this is something I should have done on my own, to find out why there are so many plea bargains of some of these.
Because the law allows that. The statute allows that. That's the, that's the issue. You know, it's unfair to, well, Mr. Hawkins explained it better than I can. Go ahead, Miss Hall, I'll give you something.
I participated in convicting a man of murder. And a federal judge gave him a new trial. The witness who first caught him in an automobile had run off with another man's wife in the state of Texas. Nobody knew where. And so we couldn't even identify him with the weapons. And so he caused the... Strange thing is, the man was let loose, and he was killed within 30 days.
I mean, he ran... Saying this, this plea bargain is allegedly, legislately down to the local authorities. So we're actually starting in the wrong place, is what you're...
Yeah. There's really nothing wrong with us taking up a position on the issue, but to single out this one body is improper and unfair.
And I agree with Mrs., I agree with Mrs. Shook, and, and, I mean, I think we're all on the same page. But I think the original intent, the original intent with the city was more of a sort of protest. And I think they wanted us to sort of join them in that. But I think, I think this takes it to the next step higher, in that we, if we're going to do it, and we would invite them to follow our lead if they wish, do it more comprehensively, and start it the other way around, rather than for us to do something that effectively won't have any effect at all, other than just a...
A perfect example is, and this is a long time ago, I understand it's being reviewed and challenged now, the Miranda Rights. And also, that picks up a criminal who just committed a crime and fails to read the Miranda Rights, has just lost the case. So it's a very simple thing. Any one of those branches could make mistakes that would cause someone not to get the maximum penalty allowed by law, up to, yes.
Well, you've called for this to be pulled and reconsidered with our legal assistance here. Refer to legal. All in favor of that motion? Would you please indicate so by saying aye? Aye, opposed? Very good. Thank you, sir. That's good. Now, Mrs. Minter.
Okay. I'd like to present to you today an assessment of our financial condition. In 2003, we implemented Gatsby Statement Number 34, which changed the basis under which we presented our financial statements, and expanded our fund financial statements to also include what are called government-wide financial statements. One reason for the new reporting model was to provide a more complete picture of financial position. Another reason was to increase the local government's ability to compare itself financially with other local governments. Today, I will try to show you how we compare to other comparable local governments through financial indicators developed through the staff and school of government. Some of you, I know, have seen a presentation on these financial indicators when you attended the Local Finance Making Sense of Annual Financial Statements class. One of the biggest challenges that I faced in preparing this information for you was trying to determine the counties to use for comparison. I tried to find counties, excuse me, similar population, tax base, and/or debt burden, who had their financial statements posted on their website. While the state has some comprehensive information on their website, they do not pick up enough numbers from financial reports to prepare the analysis that I prepared for you. So I had to pretty much rely on being able to find counties who had three, four, and five years' worth of financial data on their website. So that made it a little difficult, and didn't necessarily pick, we did not necessarily get to use some of the counties we would have liked to have used. Then we also had to, for the Enterprise Fund or our Solid Waste Fund, had to find counties who also had a solid waste fund. As you can see in the data that was provided to you, our benchmark group for the government-wide level and the general fund included Chatham, Wilson, Granville, and Haywood. For the Enterprise Fund group, we included Chatham, Columbus, Edgemont, Granville, and Halifax. The first set of financial indicators that we will look at today will be applied at the government-wide level. The government-wide level includes not only our main operating fund, the general fund, but it also includes our special revenue funds and our capital project funds. This level is reported on the full accrual method, so capital assets and debt are also included at this level, which you do not see when you look at just our straight fund financial statements. Move it ahead. This is the exact same information you have in the little tetany graphs, but I thought it would be beneficial to be able to see them a little bit larger when we went over this. The first dimension that we will look at on the government-wide level is inter-period equity. Inter-period equity addresses whether a government lived within its means during the fiscal year. The total margin ratio is the indicator used to evaluate this dimension. A ratio of one or higher indicates that a government lived within its means. It's calculated by taking our total revenues, basically, and dividing it by our total expenditures. As you can see, we are, since 2005, we were well below 1%, or 1.0. 2006, we went over, and that is probably due to the cash from the COPS that we had sold. But then you see we've gone down and then slowly creeped back up. And what we're pretty much following our benchmark group, which is the red line. This is affected too, because when we include the government-wide level, include our capital projects, when we go out and borrow money, it's a one-time influx of revenue. And then over, you know, the next two or three years, you're spending that money out. So oftentimes, you know, our revenue, our expenditures will exceed our revenues, but it's planned that way. Okay? The next dimension that's looked at is financial performance. It provides the magnitude of how a government's financial position improved or deteriorated as a result of resource flow. The indicator used to evaluate financial performance is the percentage change in net assets. A positive percent change indicates that government positions improved. And it's taken the change in net assets divided by net assets at the beginning of the year. This, before you wonder what in the world's going on and where it in the negative so long, let me explain that our net assets, net assets are affected by the debt that we issue for school facilities that we don't have an asset for. In other words, the buildings are offset on the school's financial books, but we have the debt. So if you look at our net assets over the years in our financial statements, you'll see we've consistently been in the negative, and that is not, it's Lee County Board of Education, Buildings, and Central Carolina Community College Facilities that we've done. So we own the debt, they own the asset, their books look a lot better than ours do. But you'll see, we're not that far below the benchmark that we have, other than 2005. We look really bad there, and that's the year that we picked up the COPS. Okay? First round of COPS that we did. Self-sufficiency is the next dimension, and it addresses the extent to which service charges cover total expenses by looking at a charge-to-expense ratio. Again, a ratio of one or higher indicates that the service is self-supporting. The calculation is charges for service divided by total expenses. This is really more important when you look at the business-type funds or our Enterprise Fund. You want, those are Enterprise, in Enterprise Fund, you want to be covering its expenses. There's a lot of debate as to how effective this is when you're looking at the government-wide level because of our function. You know, we are out to do public good, and so a lot of things we do, we know we aren't self, it's not going to be self-supporting. But as a board, you still need to evaluate those and to make sure that you're putting your public dollars to the best use and have the right mix of things that are self-supporting and things that are not. I will also tell you, this may also be affected that some of the benchmark counties may have inspections and planning and house instead of contracting with the city. And those are things where you are trying, a lot of the counties, a lot of the counties are trying to make self-supporting, and we do not carry those on our books. So that may be one reason we're well below the benchmark.
That's a good benchmark to be below, though, isn't it? Didn't you say one was?
One means you're self-supporting. So if you're below one, you're not self-supporting.
1% is...
This really shows in the general fund, we are not charging a lot of fees outside of the property tax and sales tax for services that are being rendered in the general fund. So when you think about, you know, the SS services, the health services, those type of things that we don't charge for, obvious, and I think that's probably all right. If you, if we were to take the building and inspections budget and add it to our budget, just for test purposes, we would probably be right on top of that line with what the city generates in building inspection fees. And once again, we're carrying some expense there, because we, you know, whatever they don't cover, we split with them 45, 55, and, but we don't have, we don't have the revenue to show for it.
Are any of the services you just mentioned ones that we can charge for?
The inspections and planning, we are, they are being charged.
I know they are, but they're, I'm talking about the SS and some of the other...
No, sir.
There, there are some things that we can charge for, and we do, like the...
Environmental health?
Right, but even...
Parks and recreation fees?
Parks and Recreation and Social Services for some of the paternity tests and everything. The parents or the people involved, we have to pay those fees. So where we can, we do charge a fee in those instances, but there are very few cases of that under Social Services.
I like that review better than... Yeah, I would not like the public to think that we are sponsoring things that we don't charge, that we could charge for and not charge for, at this, especially during this point.
Right. Where you find you have to balance, is you make the decisions on, every year, what your recreation fees are going to be? And you decide, okay, do we want to charge this much so that people have the opportunity to participate, or we want to charge the full cost? And things like that. But no, we do try to charge for anything that we can. Financial, financing obligation provides feedback on service flexibility or the amount of total expenses committed to annual debt service by looking at a debt-service ratio. This is one you hear from us a lot, when you see the reports from Davenport, and I try to stress it to you each year when we do our financial statement review, because it is one you also use, it's one of your financial policies. Obviously, as, you know, our debt increases, our service flexibility decreases. So, and we are tracking higher than our benchmark group, but you've known that. We've told you that, and we consistently are on the higher end of this ratio when we look at our debt. But that is, you know, because we are funding our schools and building schools and community college facilities.
And another thing, when you, when you cut your budget significantly, like... And another thing, when you, when you cut your budget significantly, like we just did, it raises your ratio. So, you have to be, you have to be careful there, because, you know, you could make your ratio go up by just increasing the size of your budget, but...
You may see a marked difference from two thousand nine to two thousand ten, we update this for you next year. Okay. The next one's, what you've been seeing, I've kind of focused on our inflows and outflows, our revenues and expenses. Now, we're moving into an area that looks more at what our assets and our liabilities are. So, in the next dimension, looks at liquidity, which is the government's ability to address short-term obligations through the quick, quick ratio, which is basically our cash and investments divided by our current liabilities. A high ratio suggests a government committed short-term obligations. And again, this is going to be affected by the issuance of debt and then the payment out of those expenses over the timeframe of construction. So, where you see the peaks, a lot of times, it'll tie back to financings and the, then the expenditures. Okay?
Okay.
Solvency looks at the ability to meet, while liquidity looked at the ability to meet short-term needs, solvency looks at the government's ability to address long-term obligations. Net assets ratios, indicator here, again, we are consistently negative, because we consistently run a negative net assets because of the large amount of debt burden we're carrying for things we do not have assets for. Okay? And this is going to present, this presents a large challenge across the state. As you can see, other counties that we use as benchmarks have fallen down into that negative range also. Leverage is the financial dimension that addresses the extent to which total assets are financed with long-term debt. Again, this takes into account our full amount of debt, but only our assets. So, again, we run high above our benchmark, because we have quite a bit of debt outstanding for the schools and the community college.
And we don't have...
Have assets.
We have very little debt on our assets now, less than two percent of the outstanding debt now.
Probably. We have the telecommunication, well, not telecommunication schools, we have the agribusiness center, and that's about it that we have debt on. That's ours. Well, and some of the cops deals were for the construction of the Stanley Park, um, Trainway Park.
Trainway Park.
Capital S, capital dimension looks at the condition of our capital assets is defined by remaining useful life. A high ratio suggests a government is investing in its capital assets. This kind of goes back to what we were just talking about. We have done, we have not done a major Lee County-owned project in several years. I think the last one outside the park would be the agribusiness center. And so, we, and as the years have been rather lean, the last few years, we have also cut back on our capital purchases quite a bit. So, you can see, we are tracking a little bit lower than our benchmark here. Now, we'll move into...
Mrs. Minter, let me ask you something.
Yes, sir.
Can we take this in several parts, or does it need to be executed all tonight?
It was a request by you to, for us to prepare this, so I'm at your disposal.
Let my old...
I, I think that we are slowly sinking.
That's not...
And, and I think to be a hundred percent, and I just wanted to raise a question, because some of the members may say, you know, let's go through it, but I thought if we could do it in two parts, it might be better overall.
Boy, a single-page summary would do me one paragraph, one sentence.
That's what you have in your agenda package.
That's good.
At least you know we love you.
That's okay. It's not, it's no, no, I take no offense to it. I knew I was at the end, and you, this was going to not be the best topic, so...
So...
Now, for this is budget time.
So, this is really a follow-up to the audit that you got in December.
Understand.
Was to help, you know, understand audit statements.
It's, it's excellent information, but I think the day's long, and we've got some other things, and I'm thinking, if you don't mind...
I take no offense, I promise you. This is fine.
And I, I think I hear Mr. R. on one end and Mrs. Shook on the other, saying, let's, let's wrap this thing up. So, thank you very much. And we'll, we'll pick it up at the next meeting. Would that be satisfactory?
That, I'm sure, whatever your pleasure is.
All right. Very good.
Excuse me, at the next, then the fact that you have the short version. Right?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Good job.
Okay. Let me get back to the resolution. I believe we have completed our agenda, unless I've skipped something. And therefore, it's time to turn to our manager for his report.
Well, in the essence of time, I'll, I'll just let you know that I'm going to put a report to y'all in writing about the Brookhaven community, updates on the septic tank survey, some other issues that were out there, and then the, where we stand on the solid waste and the legal dumping issue there. So, on the side of, you know, we didn't find any problems with the, with the septic tanks, and it didn't seem to have any leakage into the pond, so the smell that's over there may actually be coming from a lift station that the city has nearby.
Where is that? We're getting...
Yes, sir.
We have that every year, that's the first, every year.
So, we're working with the city on that. Other than that, we're, you know, just waiting on the School of Government, not the Association of County Commissioners, to come up with the ethics sample policy. But in the meantime, you may be wanting to think about things you want to add to the policy when we get it, because basically, what you're going to get from the School of Government is a minimum to meet the statutory requirements, so...
You expect that in April, probably?
I expected it back in, in December, so I'm not the only one. Other manager, we, there are other managers across the state who have very similar issues who would like to see this done and, and move on, so...
Can, can we go ahead and just work on our own, and then, when we ever see something from them, make sure ours fits?
You can certainly send us suggestions as to what you would like to see added.
Because I mean...
Then, when we, then when we get a little bit closer to actually adopting it, you know, I can go ahead and put together a summation of the issues that were, that were brought up.
This has to be done by January of eleven, and they keep putting it off, they're putting it off, and I'm hearing April, May, maybe June.
What is the problem? We do have one in place.
Right.
But I think, I think if, I think we don't get moving a little bit further along, you know, I don't think you want the legislature to put more restrictions on, on local governments. I think you want to hurry up and act, so it's kind of got bogged down. It's a little bit frustrating at this point in the process.
I'd like for us to go ahead and start putting some ideas out there, and then see what they send us in management.
Can you send a message again, Mr. Crompton, that we're impatient?
Tell them we're impatient at this point, that we have an issue that we want to get behind us.
Yeah.
And...
Anything else?
I talked to you today about those two issues that the board members are getting a lot of emails about, annexation and euthanasia. All I can tell you right now is these were two issues that the legislature put into study committee, so those bills are alive and fair game in a short session, and, and the folks who have a lot of interest in those two issues have, are starting to put a lot of heat on folks to support their cause. So, you know, I kind of have a mixed reaction on the annexation, because at one point, you know, we make arguments that city residents are county residents, and, you know, on this issue now, you know, we're, people are trying to say, well, you're supposed to represent the people in the unincorporated areas, and you need to fight the cities on this. Well, all of a sudden, we're taking a new, new tact and going after the cities on an issue when, when those folks are county residents as well. So, it's, you know, for me, sitting in this chair over here, it's tough for me to go back and forth, saying that, you know, one minute I'm with you, one minute I'm against you. But there are issues that, that the association has, association has brought up that affects counties in annexation. They have lobbied for those issues. They have not lobbied for an outright prohibition of annexation. But, you know, there are some good, well-thought-out positions there, which I'll send to y'all. And then, the Health Board is, is reviewing animal control, and it's in entirety, and one of the issues is the euthanasia. So, you know, the real issue we have with euthanasia is we have a population problem in the county. Hopefully, they'll come forward with a proposal that we can get control of the population, and then we can change the way we euthanize.
And they, they suggested by the end of the year, through a special committee, that they...
I think they're trying to move faster now. They're trying to have something for us to consider in the budget process, and I'm hopeful that we'll have it.
Very good. Anything else, Mr. Crompton?
No, sir.
Okay, it's time for Commissioner's comments. Mr. Pascal. No comment. Mrs. Shook?
I'm all out. Just pass it on.
Mr. R.?
The players on the school board, last I heard, they're going to advertise the bids at Lee County High School on April the seventh. They got moved back a little bit. Other than that?
Mr. Kelly?
I do want to tell everybody that tried to get me to run, I appreciate all your confidence in me, and as well, most, most people on this board know that I'm, my wife and I are currently expecting our third child, and my wife has had some complications with that, that whole experience right now, and it, it was not a good time for me to throw my hat back in the ring. So, anyway, I just wanted to put that out there for everybody else, but I do appreciate everybody calling and begging and doing anything else, but anyway.
Mr. Reeves?
I was talking to...
That's right. Yeah, I can do this.
I got a couple of things. One, I have here a memo, January eleventh, from DOT, Department of Transportation. I want to ask the manager to take a look at the policy, one of their policies that deals with socially and economically disadvantaged businesses, and see how our policy matches up to it. You got the copy right here. You got a copy in this chair, none of you do, sent to you. It's on page two, but I'll give it to you. And the second thing is, I spoke with manager, county manager, about sending letters of support for academic and athletic success by students and players in our schools. And as far as I'm concerned, it doesn't matter what, what grade, but we ought to recognize that when they do well, when they, especially when they achieve the state levels or in competition, regardless of what it is. But we could send a, a letter and do a resolution if it is a successful venture at a statewide level. But I think he indicated that maybe Scotland had a program. So, I would ask the board to consider having that presented.
Send a letter and buy a code.
Right.
Collegiate to...
Yeah, exactly.
Could help them with, you know, choice of, you know, career in baseball, football, and...
Said academic and athletic?
Oh, yeah.
Vocational included in that?
Sure. Very good.
Students by meal, yeah.
Anything else, Mr. Reeves?
No, thank you.
Okay, no comment here. Then, we have a motion to...
Yes. I'm going to go into closed session to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of business in the area per NC General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A four.
All in favor of going into closed motion, please say aye. Am I opposed? We are in closed session. It'll take about a three-minute...